Why don't we call this work session to order? And perhaps we'll start with Dr. Branch. If the council could turn to page 11, we'll start with fiscal matter one, which is a contract. And again, page 11, fiscal matter one. And I see Dr. Branch working his way up. And good afternoon, Dr. Branch. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and good afternoon to all the council. Our first contract is the administration's requesting approval of a contract with Dr. Joseph Nichols, MDMPH, to provide consultation and technical assistance to establish the medication-assisted treatment program at the detention center and to implement strategies to expand our office-based buprenorphine treatment in the community. Dr. Nichols is a board-certified family medicine physician with extensive experience in addiction medicine, who is also an epidemiologist. The contract term is for one year with a possibility of three one-year renewals, and the funding of this contract will be provided by the SAMPA, the federal grant.
Great. Any questions or comments from the council for Dr. Branch? Everybody good? All right, why don't we do the addendum then, fiscal matter 10, it looks like.
Okay. The administration's requesting approval of a contract with Schreiber Translation to provide interpretation and translation services for our all-county agency. Obviously, there's a federal requirement that the public and healthcare entities that receive federal funding provide translation and interpretation services. The contract term is three months with four one-year renewals, and the funding will be provided by Baltimore County. There was a question regarding our American Sign Language, and we're fully aware that the state contract that we piggybacked on does not include American Sign Language. But purchasing will be issuing individual purchase orders on a case-by-case basis to ensure that these services are provided until a long-term contract can be secured.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Branch? Everybody good? All righty. Thank you, Dr. Branch.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, why don't we call up Barry Williams, Director of Department of Recreation and Parks? Council could turn to page one, Bill 36-19, page one for the council. And good afternoon, Mr. Williams.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon, council. Baltimore County and its Commission on Arts and Sciences regularly receive grants from the Maryland State Arts Council, utilizing such grants along with county funding to help support a variety of organizations and programs that provide arts and sciences services enjoyed by the citizens of the county. The Baltimore County Commission on Arts and Sciences was recently made aware of an additional grant opportunity available through the MSAC, which would enable the county via the commission to secure an additional $5,000 in grant funding. A supplemental appropriation amount, an amount of $5,000, is needed to enable the county and the commission to receive the $5,000 in additional matching grant funding from the MSAC. The county's required equal match shall consist of $5,000 in general funds available within the fiscal year 2020 budget. The intended use of the grant funding, the match, and an additional $7,547 in available unexpended grant funding for a total of $17,547 is to establish a public art grant program that would provide funding for local art initiatives.
Did you see the auditor's question as well?
I did. And the question was, what process is in place to allow county artists to compete for the opportunity to receive such a grant? And my response is, the Arts Commission works with the Arts Guild, and it is the Arts Guild that selects the artists.
And so, we're talking about $5,000?
$5,000, right.
Okay. Councilman Marks?
Thank you. Mr. Williams, and we recently completed a mural in Towson, a beautiful mural, at Pennsylvania Avenue and York Road, and spent about $6,000 in private money. Would that sort of project be eligible in future years for this type of funding?
Yes. As a matter of fact, there is one that is proposed for Catonsville area.
Yeah, I would just, a lot of people are going to see this, and they're going to say, "Well, you just spent all this money in Towson, private donations," which is great.
Right.
But I can say to them, in future years, this is the sort of initiative that could be financed through this program.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty. Well, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we call up next Colonel David Fodorhour from the Baltimore County Police Department? And if the council could turn to the addendum for the lease for Montgomery Park, as, and we all, I think we all knew this was coming up. It's the addendum again for the Montgomery Park lease space that we were talking about with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. And good afternoon, Colonel.
Hi, council. It's going to be tough following that voice.
It's a good voice.
It is a good voice. All right, this is a reference to lease between Montgomery Park and Baltimore County, Maryland, in reference to OCSDEF, which stands for Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force, their strike force that they're establishing in the Baltimore region. We, as the police department, are a participant in this strike force. Baltimore County entered into this implementation agreement as a fiduciary for OCSDEF. Under that agreement, Baltimore County's named tenant on this lease that we're talking about here today, we will pay the monthly lease and the operating cost of the strike force. Baltimore County will then submit all reimbursable expenses to OCSDEF on a monthly basis, and they will in turn reimburse Baltimore County. This is all in reference to the bill that you passed, 3319, for the 19 into 20 years and the expense budgets. The appropriating monies derived from these federal funds are made available through the county, through OCSDEF. The amendment appropriates $2.3 million for the fiscal year ending in 2020 in the Gibson Grant Special Revenue Fund of the Police Department. This lease is a 10-year term, and there's an option for a five-year term after that. The base rent in year one is $118,256 monthly. By the time we get to year 10, it'll be $154,297 monthly, and that is for that Montgomery Park space down in Baltimore City. And this is reimbursable again. This is, we are fronting the money, and OCSDEF is reimbursing us. We may terminate the lease with 12 months' notice, and upon, if we need to do that, the fund's not, in the event of the termination, there's a termination fee that's equal to the unamortarized leasing cost, which is the build-out that Montgomery Park is doing. And if that is the case, OCSDEF will reimburse us for that as well.
Any questions or comments for Colonel Fodorhour? Everybody good? Okay. And then I know we have one more, which is on page 38, miscellaneous business item number three, resolution 91-19.
Okay. This is a reference to a donation. The Baltimore County Police Foundation has offered to donate weight equipment, strength equipment, for use of the support operations officers, which encompass our SWAT, our tactical officers, our K-9 officers. They're currently housed at the North Point Government Center. The total amount for this donation is $84,646, and the donation's been offered by the Baltimore County Police Foundation without any special conditions or expectations in exchange for the donation, and no matching funds are required.
I'm just curious, Colonel, is this, this gently-used weight strength equipment coming from the foundation, or does somebody give it to them, and they're just gifting it to the county?
Ultimately, it came from a company, Bodie Works Health and Fitness. I believe it is gently-used. You know, I do have an itemized thing if the council's willing to see which pieces of equipment.
Any other questions or comments? I think it's great. All right? Well, thank you.
Okay.
Really appreciate it. All right. Our next order of business, David Lichens, Director, Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability. Perhaps the council would turn to page 33, fiscal matter eight. Page 33. And good afternoon, Mr. Lichens.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey to, for continued maintenance and operation of 17 surface water gauges, which measure water quality and depth and flow in streams throughout the county. I think we probably have one of these in at least each of your council-matic districts. The contract is for a two-year contract, starting on October 1st, and the county will contribute $399,536. US Geological Survey's contribution is $153,944. We use this data for our stream restoration projects and our, towards our TMDL allocations. I know the U.S. Geological Survey uses it for research. Also, the Department of Public Works uses it for its designs for bridges and culverts and stream crossings. I know that Maryland Department of Environment uses it, and we frequently get requests from private colleges to use this data. We've been doing this, it's a two-year contract, and it's sole sourced with USGS, and we've been doing this every two years since I've been here for more than 30 years.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lichens? Everybody good? All right, why don't we take the next addendum, which is fiscal matter nine, for, I think, Gont Enterprises?
Right. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Gont Enterprises to dispose of derelict and abandoned boats and marine debris in the county waterways. This is a five-one-year contract, basically, not to exceed $70,000. This is actually a grant that we're getting money from the State Department of Natural Resources to do. We asked for $25,000, and they gave us $15,000 this year. But what we use that money for really is to go out, the Department of Natural Resources will go out into the navigable waterways and remove boats and debris. You know, when you have storms coming down the Susquehanna from the gunpowder, you get sometimes whole trees come down or logs that are hazards to navigation. So DNR will go and remove those. If they do not, we'll use this contract to go out and remove them ourselves, and DNR will reimburse us for that. We also have a program within our department where we will go out and remove debris that is in amongst piers and bulkheads, so that they don't endanger those items. So we'll go out with a little boat, drag it back in, and cut it up ourselves.
All right, Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lichens, I can't thank you enough for keeping to your word and investigating this and seeing how important it is to all of eastern Baltimore County waterways. I myself probably made 12 calls last year for trees that, when they open up the Susquehanna, whole entire trees, up to 40 feet long, come down the Gunpowder River and then make their way into the bay, which is very, very dangerous once they start to submerge and watercraft can hit them. And sometimes it's, they're smaller ones, but they're, you know, they're big, they're heavy, and they're dangerous. So thank you for making sure that this grant money got applied for, and I'm very, very grateful, and I know my, I'd like to thank you on behalf of my constituents, because this can be very, very dangerous. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Grandell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lichens, Councilwoman Bevins stole my thunder on this, but, you know, shortly after inauguration, this was one of the first issues that I spoke to the administration about, spoke directly to the county executive about, and we were told that it's being worked on. And it's really good to see that this, this program is coming to fruition. I think this does a great service to our constituents, who, through no fault of their own, have debris coming down from the Conawingo when they, they open it up. And I think it's a service that the county should be providing, should DNR not have the will or the, you know, the ability to, to provide this service. And I'm really interested in the abandoned boat removal, which has been a sore subject in both Kathy and my neck of the woods. It's, there needs to, a lot of folks don't really understand the process, and it can be a little cumbersome in trying to find the title and the owner, notifying the owner. It's difficult just to take a boat out of the water. And I know it's been some of our marina owners, folks involved with the Marine Trades Association, this has been a really, really hot topic. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to set up something with you to learn more about how we're, how the program's going to work for abandoned boats, so both Kathy and I can inform our constituents on that, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Lichens. Appreciate it. All righty. Next, why don't we call Deborah Shindel from Property Management. If the council could turn to page 27, fiscal matter six. Page 27. And good afternoon, Ms. Shindel.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman, Councilman Chair, and councilmembers. Property Management is requesting approval for a contract for metals treatment technology to provide maintenance of the police outdoor fire range for the complete removal and disposal of the lead shot and lead waste residue that is actually in, getting shot into the earth berm at the outdoor shooting range. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. It is, includes a weekly cleanup for the police to utilize, so that we can regularly maintain the berm as needed, and they can continue to put on, fluff back in the dirt and make sure everything is done. And then, as needed, based on how much that the berm is shot into, we will also utilize this for complete abatement of all of the lead that is shot into it. It's really just for the safety of our officers, to make sure that the black splash does not hit them as they shoot into it. It was a competitively bid through purchasing. The police will actually be maintaining the monthly, and PM, Property Management will be doing the larger bi-yearly abatement. It's a time and material contract, and basically, it also includes testing for the, when we're done removing the, the lead itself, the EPA requires that we do testing to, to ensure that we have it at a safe level for our officers. So that is encumbered into this contract.
Any questions or comments from the council? Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, I'm sorry, this is probably a really dumb question.
No.
But when I see $532,000, sometimes I have to ask them. Is there anything else they can shoot into besides the dirt? We're talking about like a hill or berm, right?
Yes.
Is there anything else that would be safer, that we wouldn't have to constantly test for the lead?
Well, actually, you're always going to have maintenance to do. So there are three methods for the police to shoot into that we actually took a look at before we decided to redo this berm this year. And the most common across the nation is a dirt berm. There is also almost like a mulch product that you can do, and it's similar. You have the high berm, but you still have to extract the lead from it. So either way, you would have to remove your lead and constantly refill the product that you're, because you're shooting into it. The third and final option is a very expensive contraption that is metal, and it actually captures the lead into it. So you fill it in with a mulch-like product, but it's capturing the lead. It's very expensive, but again, still requires the same basic maintenance that, even though it's a little easier to extract the lead, it's very expensive to install and to maintain. So regardless of what option we have looked at, all of them would require the weekly maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would it be the same dollar amount roughly, whether it was one thing or the other?
So when we looked at it the last time, before, it was, we could refurbish this berm for 20 years with dirt, and this, taking out the lead for what it would have cost for the, to put the steel trap mechanism in there. We could do 20 years' worth of maintenance before we even saw any benefit to our money back, so we chose not to do it. We are going to actually continue to look at it with the police, with the new police chief, and kind of have a discussion with her, so we can have future plans.
Councilman Crouch?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may not be the right person to ask, but I understand that there's a facility being built on Liberty Road.
Red Rainbow.
And is it complete yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. But it's a facility, I know the Montgomery County Police are going to be using it for training, et cetera. Do you know if the county has any plans to utilize the state-of-the-art facility?
I would not be aware of that. That's more of a programming. You'd have to ask the police.
Yeah, is anyone here from the police, maybe can find out from the administration? Okay, I'm sorry, didn't have a chance to ask, but my excuse is that I came home from vacation, I got home four o'clock in the morning with three and a half hours of two screaming cats in the car. Thank you.
Councilman Petoka and Councilman Jones? Okay. Councilman Jones?
I was just going to do my very best to say, I'm almost certain that, once the facility is fully built out, I do believe, given the number of, the amount of interest expressed by other law enforcement agencies, I'm almost sure Baltimore County would be interested in using it as well. They, the facility will offer state-of-the-art facilities in terms of virtual reality. They have an indoor shooting range that, the size of it is, is not, is not another indoor shooting range of this size within like three or four states of where we are. So I'm almost sure the Baltimore County Police will have some interest in it. Sure. If not already, I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one other, just for curiosity's sake. Where, where is this disposed of, the lead?
So by EPA law, you have, you can't just dispose it in any landfill.
Right.
You have to take it to a site that the contractor's familiar with. I apologize, I don't know exactly where it is, but it is a certified site that only will take lead.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Jones?
And I do apologize, the name of the facility is called the Gun Tree Club. Gun Tree Club. So if anybody was interested in looking it up.
The Gun Tree Club, like the, that's nice.
And Ms. Shindel?
Gun Tree.
Did you look at the auditor questions on this as well?
Oh, yes, I did. So there are a few auditor questions that asked us to explain first the decision to bid this service rather than utilizing the current lead abatement contractor that we had. The current lead abatement contractor that we currently have really is specialized in bill, inside buildings. When we had to utilize their contract, they had to sub out the abatement removal for the outdoor berm, because it's not their specialty. So what we decided to do is, for the county, for the county's sake, we needed to get that weekly maintenance done, and we needed to make sure that we did abatement on a regular basis. We wanted to hire the specialist that would be able to handle this type of work, rather than going through our current on-bait lead abatement, excuse me, contractor, and having him give us a higher price because he's subbing it out. So we just put a new contract on the street in order to get the specialist that was required for this. Is that okay? And then it says, how do the unit prices compare in the proposal contract? Obviously, the way, the one time that we had to use the former contractor, the lead abatement, it was much more expensive because of, they could charge the subcontractor rate. So right now, we get a better rate from a more specialized individual. Last time, it was $217,000 to actually abate that berm. So we feel that we're going to get a much better deal for the county. And are these specialized services that no other bids received? Yes, that is correct. We only had one certified bidder, and they were awarded the contract.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilman Petoka?
Just one question about if there is lining beneath the berm, and is there any concern related to lead contamination of the soil below? Yes.
So, thank you. Well, that's part of it, that is, we have to test. When we do the abatement, we take all of the dirt completely out, and it gets sifted, basically, to kind of get the lead out of it. We have a material on the bottom of the berm before you put the dirt back in that kind of helps it from not leaching, and then we test the ground to make sure that it is safe in the level. So it's constantly taken.
How close is it to the watershed?
It is, uh, it's not. It, it's quite a ways away. There is really no concern, because I understand we did, but there is, it's safe within that buffer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, why don't we move forward then, page 30, fiscal matter seven.
Property Management would, is requesting approval of a contract with CD Associates International to provide commissioning authorized services for enhanced commission of various Baltimore County facilities. The goal of the commissioning process are to assist the counties in defining performance-based project requirements, provide safe and healthy facilities, and to provide energy performance and minimum consumption, to reduce operating costs, and to ensure adequate county staff orientation and training to improve facilities, systems, documentation. This is a one-year contract that we are, with five years. We are piggybacking on this contract with Montgomery County. We had $25,000 author- Um, we had 25,000 authorized to spend before we, um, have gone to council and have not used that as of today. Um, this third-party, uh, company, if we build a new building, traditionally, um, the commissioning is done by the general contractor. He hires somebody under his auspice and he pays them. And third-party commissioning is that you go through all of your mechanical systems, whether it's water system, um, or typically HVAC systems, to make sure that it is working as designed before the county takes it over, and that it's the proper humidity and temperature level, and everybody's getting the same air quality at the end of the line of your HVAC. And you can also test your water. Well, it's, we've traditionally have done that with, um, in our capital project as part of the large contract. We have now decided with the new technology that we, um, would prefer to take that out of the hands of third-party, uh, out of the general contractor and use a third-party. That would be more biased, unbiased for us. And we would also then use this for, um, projects we have not used in the past where we have done replacements of air, air conditioning units. And we're, we're finding that, um, there's a need before we release the contractor to have a, a third-party come in and say, yes, it's functioning before the county accepts it, and then we're responsible for all the things that are not right. We make sure we get what we paid for and that it's functioning when we take it over.
And then there was an auditor question. You kinda touched on it, but, um, if you could just...
Yes, so, um, it says, please explain the rationale of procuring these services and the benefit that it provides. And I said, like many jurisdictions, um, the third-party that we are using is really a safety net for Baltimore County. You're not counting on that general contractor who's building it. It seems like a vested interest. We now recognize with the, with the technology that we really need to make sure that we get what we paid for.
That's, that's what I thought. Any, uh, questions or comments from the council? Everybody good? All righty, thank you, Ms. Schindel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, why don't we next call up Jeff Peluso, Design Chief for Department of Public Works, and if the council could turn to page 16, fiscal matter two. Page 16, as Mr. Peluso makes his way up. Dex Imaging of Maryland.
Good afternoon. Uh, council chairman, fellow council members. Uh, the first contract that we're gonna talk about, the administration is requesting approval for a contract with Dex Imaging. Um, they will provide, uh, a lease for a large-format printer, um, as well as maintenance and supplies for that. The device will be used to provide large-format prints to the public, uh, other agencies within DPW as well as PAI, and, um, also personnel within DPW. And, um, it also has scanning ability, uh, for our records management system. It's a five-year lease for $64,715.
Any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Patoka?
Uh, yes, uh, so I don't see the Planning Department listed here as having a large-format printer, and it seems like they would be one of the agencies that, uh, would need that kind of, um, machinery.
They may have one. Um, I know that, uh, downstairs, um, uses it. There's, I, I think even EPS has a large-format printer, so...
Okay, so this is just adding to other agencies?
This is one that is, um, where the public goes for as-built drawings and such. So if they want to see a, um, if someone is getting a sewer, having a sewer connection, and they wanna know what, uh, the sewer lines are in front of their house, they can go into, um, our group, Records Management, and we will print that off from this printer that we would be. So we have one currently. Um, the lease is, is almost up, and it's, matter of fact, just yesterday, it went down and needs a $10,000 part, so we, uh, we need a new one soon.
Good stuff. We could probably use one in the council office.
It's pretty expensive. It's expensive, for sure.
I mean, we can certainly, you know, if someone requests something, we can, we can print it. We, we have a, a group that just does that.
Uh, councilman, we do, I have received maps from planning with, from their, a large printer, so they do have one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any, uh, any other questions or comments? Everybody good? All right, well, why don't we do, uh, page 18, fiscal matter three, Pure Technologies?
Okay. Uh, so, uh, the administration is requesting approval, um, of a, uh, PO for, uh, Pure Technologies, um, to inspect the Delmar Force Main. Um, they will provide, this is a, this is a mouthful, uh, remote field eddy current inspection to the Delmar Force Main. Um, this inspection was done in 2012. Um, the, um, people and utilities changed the operations of the pump station, um, and we would like to see how those changes affected the integrity of the pipe, so this inspection will, uh, reveal that. Um, it's a one-time service for $378,576, and I believe this was through the 902F.
Any questions or comments? All right, why don't we do page 20, uh, fiscal matter four?
I, I don't have the, I have the list that's on my, which one is it?
Uh, this for B and J Sweeping and Sons?
B and J, okay. I have two left. Uh, so this one, uh, administration's requesting approval, uh, for a contract with B and J Street Sweeping. Um, this contract will provide street sweeping services for Eastern Baltimore County, um, to meet state TD, TMDL maximums. Um, this contract is, uh, for six months initially for $268,000 with two one-year renewals.
Questions or comments? Councilman Patoka?
Just a comment. This is street, uh, sweeping, it's waste removal, isn't it?
Yes.
And this meets, this is the threshold for which a contract would come before the council, and we would review and approve it. And I just wonder why this, this seems to be an anomaly in terms of our entire waste management system, where this contract comes before the council, but inexplicably, other areas related to waste management and waste removal, uh, those contracts do not come before this council. And I just wanna point that out for something to, to consider as we move forward, that, you know, the nuts and bolts of government are educating, picking up trash, uh, making sure our streets are clean, public safety, and all these things come before the council for budget review, for contract review, with the, inexplicably, with the exception of waste removal. And so, moving forward, it's something that I would ask, uh, this council to consider because here we have a contract related to waste removal that actually, in fact, does come before the council.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, why don't we do page 24, that's a contract for Weather Watch.
So the administration's requesting approval for a contract with Weather Watch, which, uh, is a forecasting company that provides, uh, weather forecasts for, uh, DPW. Um, it's basically, for the most part, used during snow season and tropical storms where, uh, we get forecasts in, and, um, it gives us the ability to, uh, schedule crews and, and put, um, resources in place for, uh, impending weather. It's a one-year contract for $1,500 with a, for one-year renewal options.
Councilman Marks?
So this contract's already commenced? It's already started?
I think I did read July 1st, 2019. It's a, it's a highways contract, um...
According to turnets, it said it commenced July 1st, 2019?
July 1st, 19, yeah. I'm not sure.
Why are we voting it after July 1st?
Why are we going through this now? I'm not sure.
This isn't the, this happens not infrequently, that contracts begin, uh, before, uh, you've had a chance to vote on, you've seen these before. The contractor understands, uh, the council, the, the county's, you know, has the right to spend up to $25,000 for services without getting the council's approval. Um, so the contractor's aware of the possibility that if the council doesn't approve the contract, they're not gonna get anything more than that 25, basically, it doesn't end. It's not, it's not a, the greatest thing in the world, but it's not the first time we've come to with something like this.
Well, I guess my, my question would be, you know, this is a clearly an issue of emergency management, and Public Works is a core mission of county government, but on the other hand, you know, I, I've never voted, not that I can remember, on a weather forecasting expenditure before, and you just have to wonder, it could be a piggybacked on other, other things that are available, other governments, I don't know. I mean, why is this needed? That's my question.
Why is this particular?
Why, why is this needed?
I mean, we, that we couldn't, I mean, guessing it's a service that, uh, is provided by, um, membership or some kind of monthly fee. Um, so if we piggybacked, I would think it would be the same, but I'm just speaking of, just from a logical standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, look, I mean, we have a, yeah.
Councilman, yeah, I could, um, the report that's generated by this service, they provide you with the, not only the type of weather, whether it's gonna be snow, snow and rain mix, sleet, ice, what time is it gonna, uh, expected to start, you know, the temperature variations, which allows DPW to plan if and when they're gonna call back crews. Um, so primarily, in the winter months, it's very important, and then this time of year with tropical storms, so that's really the intent.
I, I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna vote for this. Again, it's, it's, you know, one of our core missions here is public safety, and another core mission is infrastructure. It, it, you know, it just kinda strikes me as a bit odd that we're, we're paying for this sort of service when there might be other ways of getting this information, but I just need to ask that.
Councilman Katch?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me what information is being provided by this service over and above what we can get from the US Weather Service? Uh, why do we need this? I mean, I, I basically, uh, if you watch TV or go online, it always tells you what's going to, the US Weather Service tells you what's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, where it's gonna happen.
Fifty percent accuracy?
Yeah, 50% accuracy. Uh, okay, is this 100% accurate is the question?
I doubt it.
You doubt it? Is it 51?
I'm guessing is that we've used this type of service for many, many years, and we've had good success with it, and that's why we continue to use it.
Yeah, the, the thing is, maybe that time has, is expiring that we need a service like this. Yeah, it's po, uh, you know, I, I just, I, I know it's not much money, but every dollar counts, so, uh, um...
Councilman, we'll be glad to follow up with you on that and, and come back with greater detail, and, you know, we always have the opportunity to terminate for convenience. We'll, we'll follow up with you.
Okay, okay.
Are you, Mr. Blades, before our vote, if you could just circulate a, just some clarification? Because, I mean, I think Councilman Marks and Councilman Katch, they do raise a legitimate question that, hey, $25,000 is still not a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money. Okay. Anybody else? Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so my colleagues, as the chairman has said, have brought up very valid concerns about there's so many outlets for, uh, gaining access to weather forecasts. The only area where this seems logically valuable to me, and, and I'd like this to be part of, kind of, Mr. Blades checking in on, and as well as the agency is, so, uh, with school closings, so in the middle of the night, the school system has to make a decision on whether to deploy buses throughout the county or not. And it's a really tough decision, uh, that the school system has to make, and they're looking at, I, um, I'm suspecting a myriad of, of forecasts, and I didn't know if this particular service would assist in that decision. And if it does assist in that decision, then that could potentially save dollars, it could potentially save little children, uh, that are getting on the school buses, it could potentially, um, prevent them from having to get ready for school, or families taking off of work because they might have to, there's a lot of, uh, variables in that decision-making. So if, if this is part of that, it would make sense. If it's not part of that, uh, I think we, we need further discussion.
My recollection is that there is conversations between BCPS and county government with DPW on, on how road conditions are, and, and, and I'm sure the contract is a factor in those conversations. Um, but I also like to reiterate this, this is a $1,500 contract, $1,500 a year, so 7,500 over the full life of the, of the contract. So when we were talking about $25,000 earlier with Mr. Field, he was referencing as far as just overall county authority to spend prior to council approval, um, but this is significantly less than the $25,000 that he was referring to.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I can...
Councilman Crandall?
Well, I just, uh, in just reading through the, uh, the fiscal notes, uh, it seems like this system is a bit more sophisticated than, uh, WBAL or any other news outlet would, would provide, or even the Weather Channel, because it, the contract stipulates that, uh, they need to change and revise their forecast, uh, when forecasts change by one inch, uh, I guess it's according to snow or, or rain, uh, or when a storm window timing changes by one hour, they need to revise their forecast. So I think it might be, um, as I said, a little bit more sophisticated with more information, and I'm sure Mr. Blades will, um, uh, give us a little more detail on that.
Councilman Marks, then Councilman Katch?
I mean, I'm, thank you, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it. I mean, we have hurricane season imminently, so, but, um, I just had a few questions, and mainly the, the concern I has is, was there a way to coordinate with other local governments? But you've answered my question.
Councilman Katch?
Yeah, my question is, does the Board of Education have the same contract with another contractor? I mean, are they getting, are they paying for this service as well?
I'll follow up with BCPS on that.
Yeah, if so, we could share instead of both having it.
Sure.
Excellent. Any other questions? Well, tell Mr. Walsh we said hello.
I will.
And, uh, thank you for your time, Mr. Peluso.
Thank you.
All righty, uh, moving right along. Um, why don't we turn to page 36, Resolution 82-19. Councilman Marks, Katch, Crandall, and Patoka, who wants to take it?
Do this.
Councilman Mark?
Thank you very much. Um, this is a repeat of what we discussed last month. Uh, this is a resolution, uh, in support of creating a regional water authority. Um, such a move would have to be undertaken by the General Assembly. Um, it is out of our hands, but it is a statement of support and policy for replacing the model that has existed for over a century, uh, the model between Baltimore City and Baltimore County of delivering water. Um, my personal opinion is that, uh, this is an archaic and probably unsustainable model, um, and we should be on the record as supporting in broad terms, moving away from that toward more of a regional water system.
And, uh, I don't know if Councilman Katch, Crandall, or Patoka have anything they wanna add? Councilman Patoka?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as, uh, Councilman Marks has said, a century ago, uh, when this was developed, if you looked at the makeup of Baltimore City and Baltimore County, it probably made sense to establish the water system, delivery system, and sewage system as it is. And now, uh, with Baltimore County on a trajectory towards 900,000 people, and Baltimore City, um, in an opposite trajectory, then there needs to be some adjustment to make sure that, that we can, uh, do the nuts and bolts of government like providing water and sewer in an appropriate way. Um, so, uh, this resolution, I think, is important. It, it's, um, in the Washington metropolitan area, there's something called the WSSC. When I was at the Maryland Association of Counties Conference, uh, just, uh, two weeks ago, I attended a work session on regional water systems, and it was really enlightening. And, you know, the WSSC is not the, the, uh, it has some, some aspects that would work and some that wouldn't. It's not the, it doesn't, uh, answer all of the questions that we would have with the regional authority here, but I think it's, it's a starting point. If you look at the organizational chart, it has the leadership of, uh, of professionals and both, um... and both elected and, and also professionals in the field that help to, to provide efficient delivery of water and sewer. And, you know, we're, we're not a tiny county anymore and we need to see that reflected in, in how we do business, especially as we talk about, and I've said this three times today, and I say it, the fourth is the nuts and bolts of government of what we do. And, you know, water and sewer is right in that wheelhouse of the nuts and bolts of what we do as a government.
Councilman Katch?
Councilman Patoka stole everything I was going to say.
Are you yielding your time?
I'm yielding my time.
Councilman Crandall, do you want to?
Sure, I, I think that Councilman Patoka, Councilman Marks have pretty much crystallized all of our, our thoughts on this and why we're, we're proud co-sponsors of the resolution. And I think that my criticisms of the, the current system are well documented enough that I can just yield my time as well.
All right, Councilwoman Bevins?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Secretary, I'd like my name added as a co-sponsor to the resolution. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Anyone? Everybody good? All right, well, let's keep moving along then. And why don't we turn to page nine, Bill 40-19. Councilman Marks, wait, hold on, I'm sorry, we do have one public speaker. Okay, I'm sorry, we do have one public speaker on Resolution 82-19. If I could call it Mr. Roger Gookin. Sorry, almost, almost, good, good to see you. Thanks for coming in. You have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. My name's Roger Gookin, I'm a retired sewer contractor, familiar with the sewer and water systems in the region, including WSSC. I am here to speak for the Green Towson Alliance in support of this resolution. Green Towson Alliance supports this resolution, urging the administration to create a truly independent, nonprofit, regional water and sewer management authority. Our region sorely, sorely needs this independent water and sewer authority. Water and sewer infrastructure is expensive and inadequate or inefficient service should not be tolerated. Safe and reliable water distribution and sanitary sewer collection and treatment systems protect human health. These are basic public services all people deserve. Listen to this number. The $289 million 2020 Metropolitan District Enterprise Fund is not subject to council approval. This does not include other DPW accounts for the Bureau of Engineering and Construction and Sewer and Water Operations and Maintenance Divisions that are subject to council approval. It's a lot of money. Can you say there is a resilient water supply system in your district? Is there adequate sewer service in Academy Heights? Sudbrook, Falstaff, Marnat Road, Brooklinville, Carney, and Sparrows Point? Significant money is spent to expand service in other areas in lieu of correcting deficiencies in your districts. Politicians should not have to compete with each other for safe and resilient water and sewer service. A truly independent, nonprofit authority would best assure the public's needs are met fairly. Transparency is important to communicate benefits. We urge the administration to open all meetings and include citizen representation and local environmental groups such as Chesapeake Bay Foundation and Blue Water Baltimore on the initial working group charged with setting the consultant's scope of work. Choose a consultant not from Baltimore County, who has worked successfully on a similar project under consent decree orders in other states and regions. Consider all best practices, such as the nonprofit model in Indianapolis and the Maryland Environmental Service. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming in.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go to Bill 40-19. That's food trucks, that's Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. In 2014, the county council passed legislation to regulate food trucks. This legislation, before us today, amends the definition of a food truck to include an unpowered mobile vehicle or trailer that sells food on a sidewalk. Food truck also includes a tent used for the same purpose. I'm working on this bill, certainly taking some input on how to make it better. One of the amendments I'm considering if it moves forward is to exempt seasonal gatherings such as farmers' markets and other street activities. But I, I do think that it is important that we continue to clarify how food trucks operate in our urban areas. And perhaps we may even just restrict this to a pilot program in Towson.
Councilman Crandall?
Sure, just a question, David. Have, have you looked at how other municipalities have regulated food trucks and, and similar carts and things?
Yeah.
Because they've gotten quite popular. And I think that consumers enjoy that choice when they're out and about and just, I'm just wondering, how, how do other jurisdictions like Baltimore County, how did, have you looked at what, what their rules and regs are?
We are looking at Baltimore City in particular.
Okay.
There, there are some, some changes that I think the, the seasonal element we're looking at as well. But Baltimore City, I think, is what we're looking at.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Jones?
No, I was, I was just going to ask my colleague, would he be willing to consider an amendment that will prohibit another restaurant from opening up within 200 feet of another restaurant?
Was that a rhetorical question?
It's a rhetorical question.
Any, any other questions or comments or rhetorical questions? Everybody good? All righty. And no public speakers on that one, Mr. Boswick?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we're, we're good and we're going to move on? Just making sure.
Nancy.
Yes, she has, she's.
Um, who was, is that Nancy?
Nancy, Nancy.
Come on up, Nancy.
Thank you so much, I kind of apologize. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
You know, as the Director of the Towson Chamber of Commerce, and I also work with
all the chambers and business groups around Baltimore County, my first priority is to protect the brick and mortars. But we've got to be very, very careful when we have festivals and events. We change the whole footprint of this town by creating environments outside of just regular restaurants and regular entertainment, by creating activities. So I just want to be careful that we don't have unintended consequences by any laws or regulations that we start that could detrimentally affect our communities. So I'd just like to make sure that we look into that first. Thank you so much.
And we, we've already discussed some possible exemptions, but trust me, I want all businesses to thrive in Towson.
It's very important. We've worked, all of us, you know, all of you up there, all of you here have worked to change our community and I just don't want to take us backwards.
Councilman?
Thank you so much, Councilman, for giving me this opportunity.
You bet, thank you. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, Ms. Everd. So I always viewed food trucks to be small business, small businesses. And I noticed that there is a Chick-fil-A food truck that parks right outside of the county office building, right in the heart of Towson. And to me, Chick-fil-A, and, you know, nothing against Chick-fil-A, but it seems like it's a chain business that ought to be bricks and mortar. And how does that fit into the, the chambers, the way the chamber operates, the chamber's philosophy on what Towson ought to be, is to have an operator that typically is bricks and mortar, to have a food truck? And does that impact the rest of the Towson business area?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because they happen to be in Towson. They have a location in Towson Town Center. And people don't realize that Chick-fil-A brings in about $3 million a year and they're a business in our community. So I'm not saying that location is a good thing because they do, they can adversely affect other businesses. But if there's a singular business that's causing an issue, then I think we need to deal with that. But again, on the other end, you've got the Halal. And they've been a part of this community and a fa, family member of this community for years. So I just want to make sure, whatever we do, it just, it doesn't hurt other businesses that are really doing very well for us.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I just think it's so difficult for the mom and pops to kind of operate where an op, where a business like Chick-fil-A has such an advantage.
Then we make those regulations, not, not against, like Halal, would it, would this bill?
They're mom and pop, right? They're small business.
They're two pops, or whatever.
Yeah, small business.
Halal boys.
Yeah.
Just saying.
So I, I'd just like to submit to Councilman Patoka that, to my knowledge, most Chick-fil-A's are franchised.
Agreed.
So they are owned by a local entrepreneurial business. So I, it's, I, I'm really uncomfortable with where we might be going with this thought process because I don't know how you can favor an entrepreneurially owned Chick-fil-A over Halal meats. So I'm not, I, I think we need to be really careful about choosing winners and losers here.
I, I would just say that, you know, what's next? A McDonald's food truck and other that kind of tear away at our traditional commercial districts that are already struggling? I'm not making a comment on Towson, but I know that in my district, our commercial areas, especially our older commercial areas, could be a lot stronger. And I just want to make sure there's no collateral, no collateral unintended consequences to commercial areas.
And Councilman Patoka, I, I 100% agree with you. My first and foremost priority is the brick and mortars in our community. But I also know, we change the footprint of this town by doing things outside the box, by having over 130 events that draw people into Towson and keep them into Towson. So I just want to make sure when we make decisions, we are clearly think them out. That's all. I'm not saying it's a bad bill or a good bill, I just want to make sure we clearly understand unintended consequences.
Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment about the east side. I know that Councilman Crandall has a tap room as well as I do now on 43 Pools Island. What's the name of yours?
Keep Brewing Company.
Keep Brewing Company. And they don't have a license to serve food. So they actually book food trucks to come to their business. Sometimes there's one, two, three, four, everything from hot dogs to crabs to brunch on a Saturday or Sunday. So again, there's no restaurant there now, but if one moved in across the street and started complaining about that food truck that is serving that business that was already existing, so it could be a slippery slope. So I do think we have to be very, very careful with this bill. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Any other thoughts or comments or questions or anything else on Councilman Katch?
Yes. Obviously with food trucks, with restaurants, we have to be concerned with health and making sure that the certain standards are met. Got to make sure that, you know, there's not unequal competition, that they're all paying their taxes, et cetera. But let me just say this, that in many cases, if you have specialty food carts, it's going to bring business to the area, which will help the established restaurants, et cetera. And I, I think that's what you're trying to do, to get the interest in Towson to the point where people are going to want to come and the more they come, the more they see. And I think it just brings success. So I think we have to be very careful with any restrictions that we put on food trucks.
And Councilman Katch, I'm so grateful that you brought that up. When we started Feet on the Street 13 years ago, nobody was coming to Towson at nighttime. People were leaving, they were walking out. I get 2,000 people a night that come here now. I mean, on a nice night, it's not raining. And then they go to restaurants before and they stay in places afterwards. So events create activity. So I just want to make sure this is well thought out. And I know Councilman Marks has extremely good intentions and I, and I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying I just want to make sure.
Got it. Any, any other questions, comments? Everybody good?
No, just, just, you know, my, my goal is for all of these businesses to be thriving. And, you know, right now, we don't necessarily have restaurants in areas where there's development doing as well as they should be doing. So it's a valid conversation, a dialogue we need to have with the administration as well. And I'm certainly willing to have that conversation.
Thank you, Councilman Marks.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Nancy. Everybody good?
Sorry for busting in.
Okay, and I, I know a lot of people are here for Bill 37-19, we're, we're getting closer. Got a couple more and then, why don't we next quickly turn to Councilman Katch for Bill 38-19, page six? That's the greenway areas. Councilman Katch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My district, of course, is rural, many greenways. And there, there are a couple kinds of greenways, ones that the public are invited to enjoy it, others where the public, because of the environmentally sensitive area isn't, should not be using it, in fact, isn't supposed to be using it. Then you have the forest buffer zones, et cetera. There's a particular situation in my district that this bill is designed to resolve where you have overlapping, I mean, can, can you ima, just, just think, you have an environmental greenway where people aren't allowed to walk and then in the middle of it, you have a recreational. So, so this bill is to resolve that problem. Mr. Chairman, I asked Mr. Alderman to put, is he on the list?
Yep, we have him signed up as a public speaker.
Okay, if you could explain the particular situation and I'd appreciate it, instead of me doing it, then you doing it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Howard Alderman.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. My client and I did approach Councilman Katch regarding this issue regarding greenway easements. As Councilman Katch indicated, there are two types. There is a recreational greenway where the land is dedicated by the owner to the county. At that point, it is county-owned land and it is wide open for public use. Then there are greenway easements where the, the dirt is retained by the owner, but an easement to Baltimore County is placed in the area of the greenway. Then you have the third concept, which is where it's either, it doesn't matter whether it's environmental or recreational, it's where you have forest buffer and forest conservation areas. Now, these areas are very tightly controlled by declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions. Impervious surfaces are prohibited, trails, disruption of the soil is prohibited. Putting easements, walkways and trails through environmentally sensitive areas. When I was asking, my client asked me to, to go to Councilman Katch, I said, I don't even know why I have to do this. If it's an environmentally sensitive area, why wouldn't it be an environmental greenway? Why would it be open to the public? I've written to all of you, except Councilman Katch, expressing my concerns and my thoughts on this. Now, it doesn't totally, whether you put an environmental easement on there or not, once an environmental greenway is created, even if it's in a forest buffer or forest conservation area, if the county determines that a trail should be created and it's going to be maintained properly in an environmentally sensitive manner, there is a process going through the Department of Environmental Protection Sustainability where a alternatives analysis has to be performed and all types of environmental controls have to be put in place. But we would ask you to look favorably on this and place environmental greenways in environmentally sensitive areas and recreational greenways outside of environmentally sensitive areas. I mean, it's just common sense to me. And I said, yes, I will come. My client said, please go and speak. I said, I'll do it. I said, but I think it's common sense, but here I am.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions, comments for Councilman Katch or Mr. Alderman? Has the, can we, has the administration looked at this? Is the administration good with this? Do you know? I have to put you on the spot.
I'm on my way.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Boswick?
I will say, when, when the bill was drafted, we, at Mr. K, with Mr. Katch's I will say, when the bill was drafted, we, at Mr. Katz, with Mr. Koch's authorization, we did send the draft to DEPS. And DEPS did reference the alternatives analysis that Mr. Alderman said can be done in certain situations, but otherwise did not take a position on it.
Okay.
And that was about, that was earlier on. That was about a month ago.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't know if any, is anyone from the Department of Planning here? Okay. I'd like to, if I can request from the administration, a map of environmental greenways and recreational greenways, really for the whole county.
Before the vote?
If we could get before Monday night, sure.
Just understanding the planning position would be helpful to me. All right.
Yeah, agreed.
They are mapped in the master plan, but it's a very small-scale map.
Okay.
I want one of those big ones. Councilman Patoka was talking about.
One of that big Dex printer, right?
There you go. That's right.
Let's use that new Dex printer.
There you go. All right. Anything else before we move on? Everybody good? Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Thank you, Councilman Katz. All right, page eight, moving forward, Bill thirty-nine dash nineteen, Councilman Katz on zoning regs permitted.
Thank you very much. I had a, I don't know if she's a constituent, but a veterinarian come to me. She wants to open up an emergency vet office in the Sparks, I call it industrial park. And that's what this bill is intended to do. Members of the council did express some concern about it, and I'd stated that I'd more than willing to make the bill a redheaded Eskimo so that it would just be restricted to the Sparks area. So, I guess I shouldn't have said that.
Isn't that against the charter?
It is what it is. So, a blonde Eskimo, I'm sorry.
Move the strike, though. Previous state.
So, anyhow, that's what the bill does. And there's no doubt that the area could use a, since I live near there, could use an emergency vet center. And as, I believe it's the bottom level of the shopping center, right now?
Shopping center, is that?
In the back of it. Okay, in the back of the shopping center, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Councilman Katz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so, I'm not really opposed to this, but I'm just very, I guess, I want to be very careful about the manufactured land that I have in my district. We're trying to bring jobs to manufacturing, trying to bring that, you know, that back to eastern Baltimore County. We've been somewhat successful, and I'm just not so sure that's the kind of use I want in my manufacturing. Not to say that that area won't work for you. So, thank you for considering my concerns.
Absolutely. And if it's a building, I think, you wouldn't have manufacturing in it anyhow. So, I don't think there's a problem with doing this to restrict it.
Right.
Because it is a service needed in the area.
It is, but they're usually going with BL, BM, on commercial corridors, in shopping centers. And, you know, for me, I have tons of vacancies in shopping centers. I would love to have a new veterinarian clinic or boarding house or something like that. I'm just not so sure that my manufactured land would be a good fit for that. But, or maybe it would be. So, I think it's just worth more conversation.
I don't know if you can answer this, Wade, but maybe if your constituent's attorney, or there's a land use attorney here that can let us know, how many square feet would a facility like this usually take up? Emergency vet services?
I got him signed up.
Chris is signed, Chris Mudd has signed up.
Okay, I'll wait for, I'll wait for Chris to come up.
Answer that question for you.
On that note, why don't we just bring him up, Mr. Chris Mudd, if you want to come on up?
Come on down.
Up to three minutes to tell us why we should kind of build more things in manufacturing. Good afternoon, Mr. Chris Mudd.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. I am here in support of Bill thirty-nine nineteen. And I will start by saying that we certainly do not object to reducing the scope of the bill. But one of the things I did want to mention today was where this use is already permitted, which includes the MH zone. It's permitted by right in the MH zone. It's permitted by right in the BL zone, in the BM zone, in the BR zone, and also in the RCC zone. And it was surprising to us when this project came about that it wasn't permitted in the ML. It actually seemed like a gap. And I should say, it technically is permitted in the ML, but in a limited circumstance where the property is served by well and septic, not public water and sewer. It's a very strange gap in the regs. And so, that's what we had discussed with the councilman when we came in to request the change. So, I actually think it fills a nice gap. To answer the question about the size, this particular facility is about thirty-two hundred square feet. And I should also note that the provision that we're amending is the provision of the ML zone where you have to be part of an IM district or within a planned industrial park, which means that those are limited portions of the ML zone in a larger snapshot. And these are the areas where certain retail and service uses are permitted within that particular type or that particular portion of the ML zone. So, with that, we would request your support for the bill as is, but certainly have no objection to working with the councilman and with the council secretary to reduce the scope if that's what we think is appropriate.
Sure. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Mudd or Councilman Katz? Everybody good? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, so we have two more issues on the docket. The next one will be Resolution ninety-two dash nineteen, which is to amend the rules of procedure for the Baltimore County Council by all council members. And then the last order of business, of course, would be the open space fees. And I appreciate everybody's patience. I know we got a lot on this docket today. Mr. Bostwick, you want to briefly?
Mr. Chair, there's also Bill forty-one dash nineteen.
Forty-one dash, oh, let's do that. Okay, sorry. Super quickly, my bad. Lots on the agenda. Thank you.
Sure.
Good catch, Mr. Bostwick. Yeah, why don't we do, why don't we do Bill forty-one dash nineteen real quick? Councilman Jones and Councilwoman Bevins, sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay. Basically, Bill forty-one dash nineteen is, and while we were doing the impact fee legislation, there was an awful lot of things going on and a lot of moving parts as we were making the sausage, so to speak. And for some reason, this idea or this amendment was excluded. It was an error on our part. And then when we caught it, it was just decided that we would just come back and make the amendment at another time. So, basically, the current law excludes residences that are certified by the Department of Planning as a senior restricted community, that are units that have seniors that are fifty-five years and older. What this bill will do will add to that exemption housing for the elderly and also assisted living facilities and continuing care facilities. These, again, are facilities that do not put any burden on schools or other infrastructure in the community. And it was just an omission that we did not include them in the first place.
Councilwoman?
I just want to say I concur. I think you covered everything. Councilman Jones, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Everybody good? Mr. Bostwick?
If I can just add to Mr. Jones, this was really an omission on my part when we were drafting the amendments. And Mr. Phillips and I were actually going over them all. And I think we actually looked at this issue, and we put it in the residential fee part of the bill, but we did not put it in the non-residential surcharge part of the bill erroneously. Because I think the intent was for both of them to be in both, or for that that senior, or senior housing component to be in both the surcharge and the fee. So, that's, as Mr. Jones indicated, while this was being done, that was not put in at that time.
And I know we have one public speaker, Mr. David Carleiner. Would you like to come on up?
Mr. Bostwick, did you have a senior moment? Is that what happened?
It was a lot going on.
It was a lot going on.
And good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, council members. We are here to support the minor amendments to Bill forty-one nineteen. Just for further clarification, I'm David Carleiner. I'm one of the partners at Brightview Senior Living. We've been providing senior living services in Baltimore County for almost twenty years. We're serving about a thousand senior Baltimore County residents today in six different locations. As you all are aware, the growth in the elderly population is quite significant in the county. The county as a whole is growing at about two percent a year. But when you look at the seventy-five-plus population, they're growing around seventeen percent a year, so dramatically more. And the sixty-five-plus population makes up about twenty percent of the total county citizens. As you said, our residents put very little strain on infrastructure. They don't add to the schools. And we think it's very good public policy to clarify these communities are exempt. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, let's go to page thirty-nine, Resolution ninety-two dash nineteen. And this is the amended rules of procedure for Baltimore County Council. Mr. Bostwick, you want to start with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just to give some brief background, as the council may recall, this is something that the Charter Review Commission in twenty-seventeen, among a number of issues, looked at. That is the life of a bill, if you will. The Charter, since nineteen fifty-seven, indicated that a bill not passed within forty days, and we're talking about a bill only, not necessarily resolutions, a bill not passed within forty days would fail. And the Charter Review Commission looked at that, looked at other jurisdictions, and recommended that that be extended to a bill not passed within sixty-five days shall fail. That was, I believe, the council took that recommendation, among others, and passed a bill to send that to the voters last year in November of eighteen. The voters approved that change as well as other changes. So, then, beginning in December, it was, what do we do with that sixty-five-day life of a bill? Mr. Petticord and I, my predecessor, actually talked about this at length because the normal thirty-day or monthly cycle that bills would normally go through had worked very well, but there were situations where an extension was warranted. So, we did come up with a draft, a very, a very preliminary draft at the end of the year. And then I came up with another draft in February of this year. We, the council may recall that there was some brief discussion of it, I think, in March. But with the budget season heating up, the consensus was to hold off until after the budget to really tackle this. So, having said that, we, the resolution was put in last month to, in fact, amend the rules of procedure. As we all know, the Charter is our working document, gives us basically our roadmap of how to do things. But the devil is in the details. And the council's rules of procedures, just like other rules of procedure in other agencies, give you a little more detail of how to deal with certain things. So, what this resolution does is formalize a process for allowing bills to stay on the normal thirty-day monthly cycle, particularly the routine things that often come before you, very important things, but again, fairly routine. So, that can stay on that cycle, but also account for bills that may indeed require either more study, or if there are amendments that are substantive that come and that the members believe warrant further consideration, you have that flexibility beyond the thirty days. So, what this resolution does, in sum, is states that on a date that a bill under consideration is scheduled for final reading and vote, a member can make a motion to extend the deadline. And that motion may be seconded and then voted on. And by an affirmative vote, a majority of the members present, it can be then granted. The motion to extend a bill from that normal thirty-day monthly cycle would be based upon two essential things, essentially two things. One, the need for further study. And two, an amendment to a bill that the member making the motion believes is substantive and therefore warrants further consideration. The only exception to that second one is if an amendment is circulated to the members prior to the work session. So, if an amendment that is substantive, it was circulated by today for a bill that was to be voted on next Monday, actually, it's Tuesday because of the holiday, then that would not trigger this possibility. But because, again, the theory being, there's enough time to go through that. So, for those two reasons, a motion, a bill can be extended. And, but the only proviso to that is, you can't obviously extend the deadline for a bill that would place it more than sixty-five days beyond. So, that's essentially the crux of it. I may have made it sound more complicated than it is, but it really is just to stay on that monthly cycle, but have options for the possible extension.
And Mr. Secretary questioned, and then I'll open up real quick. Does that, any member can make that motion, not just the primary sponsor, but any council member could move that?
That's correct. Any member can make that motion, whether they're the sponsor of the bill or not.
And it's just a simple four, four votes needed?
Correct. Or depending on if they're, assuming there are seven members present, yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. After, last term, after being here just a short while, I did get very concerned when amendments were offered at the very last minute. And, you know, unfortunately, the legislative, the county council doesn't have the program which would allow a council member to fold the amendments into the bill instantly, which the state legislature has, which is a great tool so you can see what the effect of the amendment is. And then there were other issues where I thought there was a lot more study that needed to occur before the bill was actually passed. So, I think it was the first or second year of last term, I put in legislation to extend the number of days we could consider a bill. And it was asked to withdraw it because we were going to have a code revision committee. Was very happy when the code revision committee recommended extending the forty to sixty-five days. The voters agreed. And here we are today with a procedure that hopefully will be in place, that when we have amendments at the last minute, if there are concerns about it, we can extend the amount of time to take a look at the amendment and the effect it's going to have. And if there's legislation that, you know, we, the majority of us aren't quite sure that that's really where we want to go, that we can extend the amount of time to take a look at the bill. So, I think that what Mr. Bostwick just described is a very limited use of the sixty-five days. But nevertheless, I think it's going to be a very positive thing for the council and for the constituents. Thank you.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. I think Mr. Bostwick did a very nice job of talking about the history of this. And, but I want to also add something. So, in two thousand fifteen, the council passed legislation I sponsored that created this Charter Review Commission. And the idea was to modernize county government. And, you know, went before the voters in two thousand sixteen. I think it passed with about eighty percent of the vote. And then the commission got to work. And this is really the last element of that commission's work product. And I think it's a good measure. I mean, I think it advances our goal of modernizing and opening up county government and making it more transparent. We've done this a lot of other ways. This work session is televised, for example. We've passed numerous reforms to the development process. And we can always be doing better. And I know there may be some folks who come up here and say, this does not go far enough. But it goes, it advances the goal. It helps make county government more transparent, more open. It gives us more time to perfect legislation. It gives us more time to communicate with our constituents and our stakeholders. Nothing is perfect, but I think this is an improvement. And I certainly want to Nothing is perfect, but I think this is an improvement, and certainly want to add my voice to those in support of the legislation.
Great. Other thoughts or comments, or Councilman Petoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo Councilman Marks' comments in terms of, I think the key, one of the key things he said is to modernize county government, and this bill not only modernizes county government, but it adds towards, it adds transparency, it adds efficiency, and this is the direction we need to be going in almost everything we do: modernization, transparency, and efficiency. So, I think this is a really good step forward.
Great. Other thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chair, just real quick. I know that Councilman Marks has said this on a number of occasions, and that is that this branch of government, we are a deliberative body, and this gives us a chance to deliberate, get community input. So, I think it is a good measure for us to undertake, and thank you, Mr. Bosswick, for figuring it out. There's some logistical things that made extending our period of contemplation of a bill for, just from a logistic perspective of making it work on our calendar, and I know that the administrative staff has had a role in this too, Ms. Bel Castro, because you do our scheduling, our advertising, our meetings, and things like that. So, thanks for the work that's gone into it.
Any other questions or comments? There are four public speakers, I think? Do you have a question?
Mrs. Bel.
Okay. All right, we do have four public speakers, and then after the public speakers, we will get to the neighbor space bill. First public speaker, Mr. Mike Pierce, followed by Paul Hartman. Mr. Pierce, up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. Every once in a while, there's an issue that raises my interest, and this is certainly one of them. Been watching this for some years. The extension to 65 days was supposed to be something to allow citizens a better input to the process. That's what the Charter Commission's report says. This bill says nothing about citizens. It says nothing about providing the public with a better chance to input on bills. In fact, that little exception that Mr. Bosswick reported was that a delay in consideration can't take place if the amendment was circulated to the members before the work session. Doesn't say anything about the amendment being circulated to citizens before the work session to allow citizens to comment on that amendment. And oh, by the way, if it was handed to you one minute before work session, that doesn't give you much chance either. I'm really puzzled by this whole notion of a process that starts out with a 40-day deadline, which can then be extended. The Charter says the deadline's 65 days. The normal tabling mechanism in Robert's Rules of Order can be used after the first or during the first legislative session in 30 days. Any member can make a motion to table it for the next meeting. It's a much simpler process, takes a lot less description, because it's already in Robert's Rules of Order. Things that are explicitly missing from this bill, or from this procedure, it needs to say that when there's an extra time period added by whatever process, it has to, it needs to make it very clear that the amendments are incorporated into the draft, and it's immediately provided to the public. Doesn't say that. That's what's really important, is that the amendments are provided to the public to review. It needs to say that, make it clear that the new version will be discussed at the next work session. That's the important thing for citizens. It will be discussed again. And it should say that when an extension is required, whenever amendments are substantive in nature. If that had been done, we probably wouldn't have had that situation covered by the last item about Bill 41 having apparently correct mistakes that were made in the amendments of the previous bill. We probably could have avoided that. And we may have been able to avoid this upcoming issue with the nature of the changes for the open space. If a better review had been done the last time around on the subject, we might have avoided that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Councilman Katch?
Yeah, Mr. Pierce, I don't disagree with anything that you've said. However, in my opinion, this is a step in the right direction, and many of the concerns you have, hopefully, will be addressed in the future, and I don't see any reason why our staff couldn't send out the bill that's been special ordered with the amendments folded into the public. I don't...
Often, we, they, 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 they,[1040.23]
I request that Resolution 92-19 be amended to require that the bill be extended if any amendments are added, other than minor technical amendments, as long as extending it won't take it beyond the 65-day limit. Or to require that amendments be made available to the public and posted on the website, I'd say at least a week before the hearing on the bill, but at least a few days. You know, one analogy that I think of is the Maryland General Assembly and Councilman Katch, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have second reader where the amendments are made, and then there's at least a day before it goes to third reader when it's voted on. And I really think that there needs to be some additional, you know, option for public input. Transparency and public input are important cornerstones of democracy. The public deserves an opportunity to express an opinion on any pending legislation, including amendments. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Katch?
Yes. The big difference is, we don't have committees. I wish we did, but we don't. And, you know, I think one thing that we could do, I don't know that would have to be part of this particular bill, but during the nine, I'll call them winter months, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have the bill and the proposed amendment for public comment. Would there be any pro-- I know during the summer that could be difficult because of the 65-day limit, but would there be anything to stop us from including in the next work session the bill with the amendment in question?
That would be, I think, as Ms. Velcastro indicated, that would really be up to the council member making the amendment. You know, it's one thing, you know, sometimes amendments that are even considered are, don't go forward. You know, it's, it's hard to, it's an inexact science. Legislation, as you know, Mr. Katch, over the years that you've done this, it, even on the third reader, there are amendments often. So what this resolution seeks to try to do is at least make it more transparent, make it more efficient and workable, and move on from there. And if there are other tweaks that need to be made, to make, you're the legislative body to make those tweaks.
Well, let me ask you, if it's my amendment, or if it's the chairman of the council's amendment to a particular bill, are you saying then you think it would be proper for me as a member of the council to ask that it, or request that it be on the calendar for the next work session?
Well--
Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, I, and we can make this change if this is the will of the council, we can amend the resolution to be explicit that a bill that is moved over to the next legislative session would also be subject to the work session.
Yeah.
And maybe that's something I should have put into the first place, but naturally, if a bill, for example, if a bill got held over from September 3rd to September 16th, it would certainly go through the September 10th work session. It wouldn't just be hidden until all of a sudden it came up on the legislative session. And so if that's a, if that is an amendment that needs to be more explicit, we can say that.
Will you draft that amendment? I think that's where we need to go.
I can do that.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other, Councilman Pataca?
Thank you, Ms. Ruth, for your comments. And for my first nine months here on the council, I've heard your concern shared time and time again. And I don't know, does Mr. Katch's, Councilman Katch's, Katch, I'm sorry.
Katch, like catch the ball.
Catch the ball. Councilman Katch's, the, what he just mentioned, does that address your concern?
Partially. It would certainly provide another opportunity for public input, and any opportunity for public input is a good thing, as far as I'm concerned. It still, though, would allow a bill to move forward if no member makes the motion that it be extended. And it also has the exception where it, you could, if you make an amendment to a bill and you send it out to the members in advance, and I don't even, if I remember right, there's no, like, time limit for how much in advance. So if you sent it out an hour before the work session, I'm not sure if that's correct, but if you send it out in advance, then if I understand this bill correctly, there's not even the option for a member to make a motion to hold it over. I'm sorry, I'm ringing, I must be too close.
No worries. Thank you. I would just say that we're taking steps in the right direction, and if we're able to close the gap a little further with some tweaks that have been suggested, not only by Ms. Ruth, but certainly constituents that I've heard from over the first nine months, I think that's, that's moving in the right direction.
Mr. Chair-- Councilman Katch?
Yeah, I think that an amendment that would basically state that the next work session, it will be on the agenda, solves part of that problem, so it wouldn't be--
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Part, yes, it does solve part of the problem.
We're headed in the right direction.
Absolutely.
Right? Okay, good.
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, when people, first of all, there's amendments made all the time, for all sorts of reasons. And we're not the General Assembly, so we don't want to slow this thing down too much. There's a lot of benefits to the county being able to move in an expeditious manner. But secondly, a person or council member always has the right to withdraw a bill and reintroduce it. Then they can go on and we can go through the whole cycle again. The idea here initially was, oftentimes when their amendments are made, people want to have more time to think about it and feel like they're put on the spot, they have to make a decision right now. And so it was a good, it was a good thing to push it back and give, give everybody a little breathing room. I guess when it, sort of pump the brakes a little bit and not make this something that it's not. The idea was not to make this, you know, I mean, I don't think anybody would have a problem looking at it again at the next work session, but the idea is not to push this thing out and make this rock too heavy to carry, because there are a lot of benefits to the county being able to move in a reasonable fashion. There's a lot of things before us, as anybody sitting here today from 2:00 can attest. All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Ruth.
Mr. Chair-- Councilman Katch?
Yeah. This council, I think, has done an excellent job. If there is legislation that's needed and it's, we need to pass it ASAP, we've been able to do that. So I don't think this is going to in any way affect that, because obviously if it's a bill that we need to pass, we're going to act on it and not delay it.
I think where this bill really comes into play is, especially on issues where there's new information that might surface that we didn't originally have, or if there's other amendments or ideas that maybe weren't considered originally, this just gives us a little more time to work through it. And, all right, any other questions before we get to our next speaker? Okay, Eric Rockwell is our next speaker. Thank you, Ms. Ruth. And good afternoon, not yet evening, Mr. Rockwell. And again, I know there's a lot of people still waiting on the last bill, so I appreciate your patience.
Good afternoon again, and I'll be brief. I echo the comments made by the other three speakers. Public input relative to the amendment process is paramount. I made this case numerous times at the Charter Review Commission, and I make it again to you today. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned, I'd just add, is that if an amendment's submitted the day of the work session, the Alter's Office probably isn't going to have any analysis of that amendment on the day of the work session. So that's another reason why you want to be able to extend the time to the 65 days and have another work session. So that's basically all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. All right, anything else before we go to our final bill for the day? Everybody good? All right, again, I appreciate everybody's patience, and it works sessions a little longer than normal. Why don't we now, if the council could turn to page four, that's Bill 37-19. Councilman Marks, do you want to start, or you want me to start? Okay. Bill 37-19 deals with open space and fees. Bill 37-19 proposes to amend the open space requirements for residential development in the adequate public facilities law. Under current law, there's a requirement placed on all new residential development that a developer provide a minimum of 1,000 square feet of open space per residential dwelling unit. This requirement may be met on or off-site from the development, however, off-site open space must be located in the same councilmatic district and is subject to the council member's approval. If it's not feasible for the developer to satisfy the open space requirement onsite or off-site, the developer must submit a fee in lieu proposal to the county and pay the fee once the amount has been set. The developer may receive credits against the fee for providing outdoor amenities onsite or off-site. Currently, the developer may receive credits worth 100% of the cost of the outdoor public amenities and 60% of the cost of the outdoor private amenities. Bill 37-19 proposes to eliminate the 60% credit for outdoor private amenities onsite or off-site. And for me, you know, this bill makes a lot of sense, because if a developer's doing private amenities, well, that developer's going to be able to charge, you know, higher rent or, you know, a higher charge for that unit, because they'll probably have more value that they can propose to whoever's going to be purchasing it. And in particular, if the public doesn't have access to that amenity, why should the public, in essence, give the credit and help pay for the credit if they can't even use it? So to me, that makes a lot of sense. Councilman Marks, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think-- I think you've hit it right on the head. I mean, I think there's a good conversation about the need to amenitize private developments and attract people, but there's also, on the other side, the need for county government and for other stakeholders to provide open space for public enjoyment. And that's ultimately what we're going to talk about today.
I know, I know we have a lot of public speakers on this, but before we get to the public speakers, which, again, I appreciate your patience, do any of the council members have any questions, comments, thoughts, before we get to the public speakers? Councilman Katch?
I'd just like to be a cosponsor.
Thank you, Councilman Katch. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? Any other cosponsorships? Everybody good? Councilman Jones is going to be a cosponsor.
No, not quite. I was just going to, you know, I can appreciate your sponsorship and bringing the bill, but I, I guess I'm just curious about, this was all discussed a couple of years ago, and everyone came to the table, and everyone, as I understood it, made some concessions, and there was some consensus made, and a bill was brought forth, and everyone was on board. Wasn't what everybody wanted, but everybody was on board, and the bill was put forth two years ago. And now today, I understand that, obviously, Neighbor Space is not happy with the bill, not happy with the way things have been going, and I understand the administration is currently working to make some changes. So I guess think it's probably almost premature that we move forward with this. You know, it would, it would be good if we were to give the current administration an opportunity to fulfill their requirements as it relates to the agreement that was made two years ago, because of, the previous administration did not do it. So you would think that we would give the current administration an opportunity to come up with a plan and implement it before we move forward with changing the law. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any other questions or comments? Is everybody good? Councilman Crandall, then Councilman Marks?
I just, I think at the heart of this matter is the definition of open space. We've been struggling with it since I've been on the council, and then, and I know you and David have put in a lot of time, starting in your first term. So I, I just don't know if this bill accomplishes that, to rectify once and for all what the definition of an open, of what open space is and what an amenity is. We're just, I think we're always going to have this argument between private and public amenity. So it's, I'm concerned that this bill is not the solution, and we're going to be sitting here six months from now with, with yet another bill.
And, any other questions, comments, thoughts? Everybody good? Before we get to public speakers, just want to make sure council's good? All righty, why don't we then start with our public speakers? I'll call your name, I'll call the next person as well, and next person wants to come up and get closer so they can speak fairly quickly, and if somebody does say something that you were going to say, you can also yield your time, or, so why don't we just begin? Our first speaker, Dr. Carol Newell, and followed by Angelica Bailey? And, good afternoon, thanks again for your patience.
Good afternoon, council members. The Green Towson Alliance supports Bill 37-19. Public open spaces are essential, so everyone can get outdoors and spend time with people in healthy communities. This is required for the health of our people, both physical and emotional health. In my medical practice in Dundalk and later in Towson, I would advise my patients to get outdoors, to walk and socialize and exercise, but they would ask, "Doctor, where can I do this?" Developers of new projects who do not provide the required amount of public open space on their own land are supposed to pay fees so the county can create it in other locations. But, under current law, parking islands and other spaces unusable are counted as open space, and a developer can deduct most of the cost of private amenities from their open space fees. The Green Towson Alliance supports eliminating those loopholes. Realize that private amenities do not contribute to public open space. We know Tom's family cannot enjoy the private swimming pool on the roof of the nearby apartment building. Recognize that the deduction for private amenities subsidizes the amenities the developer would have provided anyway, to attract buyers. Without the subsidy, the condo would still have had tennis courts to attract Dick's family to live there, and by the way, Dick still wants to use public open space. Think, can Harriet and her children play frisbee on a parking lot island? Of course not. So why does that count as open space? We want real opportunities for healthy outdoor activities. We need open space for trees to absorb stormwater, filter air pollution, and cool our region. We all need true public open space to gather and create community. No more compromises. Eliminate the developers' loopholes, for the sake of the health and resilience of Tom, Dick, and Harriet's families and all our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Angelica Bailey, followed by Paul Hartman. And, good afternoon, Ms. Bailey?
Hello, Angelica.
Angelica, sorry.
That's okay, happens a lot. You would think Hamilton would have helped, but it really didn't. So I am Angelica Bailey, I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Building Industry Association. Thank you for your time. We are here testifying against this bill. I think this would hurt the county more than it would help it, really. Current standards encourage amenity-rich communities. That draws potential home buyers to the county, which is exactly what we need. If quality amenities become too expensive to provide, we won't be able to do it, and people will move to competing jurisdictions instead. Fee and lieu is really their last resort, and they, we shouldn't be driving them up. We should be keeping them reasonable to encourage good communities and a good tax base in Baltimore County. You know, we've been hearing figures as we've been talking about this bill the last few days, we're not sure where they're coming from, to be very honest with you. It's only been three years. We don't have enough data right now to show that there even is a problem. Honestly, we'd like more transparency. We'd like to know where the money is going, what it's been spent on. It takes time to pull that information together, and until we have that, we really don't know that there is a problem here. So without more conclusive information, it is unclear to us why any changes are needed at this point. We just did this in 2016, it was a big collaborative effort, there was communication and discussion with community groups, industry representatives, and the council, and we weren't given the opportunity to collaborate on this bill this time. But we would be happy to sit down with community advocates and the council to work out any kinks, if there are any, which, at this point, we just aren't sure there are. So we ask that you vote no on this.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Our next speaker, Paul Hartman, followed by Laura Taylor Mitchell. And, good afternoon, Mr. Hartman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'm Paul Hartman, and this time I am speaking on behalf of the Towson Communities Alliance, which represents 30 communities in the Towson area. TCA supports Bill 37-19, and I agree with what Dr. Newell had testified about. Adequate open space is very critical to the quality of life of Baltimore County residents, and just in my community of Agworth Manor, we're eagerly awaiting the opening of Radabaugh Park when the grass becomes established. We hope that the Six Bridge Trail Project will be developed in the near future that will connect Radabaugh Park with another new county-owned green space to the south. And in Councilman Quirk's district, the Catonsville Rails to Trails Project, I read about, and that looks like an awesome project. So these are just a few of the great open spaces that we do have, but still we have a huge deficit in the open space. It's important to have a place within a 10-minute walk from homes, and there are so many areas, especially inside the Urteil, where that is not the case. So allowing a reduction in open space fees for private open space and minuscule islands and parking lots, it detracts from this goal of providing that walking-distance open space. So eliminating reductions in open space fees would possibly pass costs on to residents or owners of new construction, but that's how it should be. Because via reduced open space fees, the rest of Baltimore County taxpayers are subsidizing private amenity, amenities that are not usable by the general public. So TCA asks that you vote for Bill 37-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
Thank you, Paul.
Our next speaker, Lori Taylor Mitchell, followed by Sheila Ruth.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the county council. My name is Lori Taylor Mitchell, and I live in the southern area of the 3rd councilmatic district, namely, I live inside the Urteil, the area where 90% of all county residents live on one-third of the county's land. I am requesting your support today to pass Bill 37-19 as written, which would close loopholes in the current law. You should all have copies of my testimony, by the way. These loopholes have seriously affected the provision of usable open space, largely because developers are not paying adequate fees for their development projects. I have previously served as a board member for Neighbor Space and have supported Neighbor Space for many years. A significant reason for my support is that I am one of the 65% of all residents inside the Urteil who cannot walk to a park or other recreational open space within five minutes. My suburban neighborhood, the Chatterley Association, has no playground or public space for residents. When our neighborhood was developed 60 years ago, the open space left by developers was between two backyards at the end of a cul-de-sac and is inaccessible to the public. The current legal requirement, as mentioned, that developers must provide 1,000 square feet of usable open space for dwelling is only if this space cannot be provided, is the waiver fee to be imposed. So 60 years later, my neighborhood still has no usable local, or open space, along with 65% of our fellow county residents. Developers should not be allowed to deduct this 60% of the cost of private outdoor amenities, such as rooftop pools and pickleball courts, let alone parking islands, from the fees they are paying, because they will not provide open space on the developed property for the public near, living near their developments. Millions of dollars in fees that should have been delegated for open space, over 1 million in the last two years alone, have been lost. We are thousands of acres short of open space that we should have for residents inside the Urteil. Open space lost in part through the lack of funding. So by passing 37-19, the county council will provide more funding for desperately needed usable open space, one of the most important investments in the overall health and quality of life of county residents that you could make, and I regret that Julian Jones is not here right now. We need to reform the legal process and provide adequate funding for usable open space for all of our residents, particularly for those living in economically distressed areas, notably in the southwest and southeast areas of the county, the northwest corridor and areas of the 5th and 6th districts. If you look on the, on the chart that you have on the other side of your copy, Essex and Pikesville have two of the worst scores for county residents being able to walk to a park in 10 minutes, a 10% or less of all residents, but over 80% of residents in Towson and Lutherville also cannot walk to a park in 10 minutes, and I am one of them. So please pass 37-19 as written, without amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Sheila Ruth, followed by Renelle Brown.
Hello again, Chairman Quirk, members of the county council. For the record again, my name is Sheila Ruth, and I'm a resident of District 1. I'm here in support of Bill 37-19, and I'd like to thank Chairman Quirk and Councilman Marks for introducing this important bill. Green space is essential to our health and the health of our planet. Study after study has shown the health benefits of being outdoors in nature, even in a small park. It can reduce your stress levels, improve mood, and even boost your immune system. Open space encourages physical activity with its well-known health benefits. Green space can also help to address the climate crisis. Trees and other green plants absorb carbon from the atmosphere, and scientists say that planting trees is one of the best things we can do to combat climate change. And parks and other green space can also help mitigate the effects of the climate crisis, such as absorbing storm runoff and reducing heat islands. Trees are the best mitigation for storm runoff, and more green space could have reduced the impact of last year's horrible flooding in Catonsville and other areas. Private amenities do not add public value, they add value to the development, value that, that people, you know, should pay for. The public should not subsidize private amenities that they don't have access to. And parking lot islands and little strips of grass don't really add public value either, they don't improve our health, and they, they don't really significantly help mitigate things like the storm runoff, they may in a tiny little bit, but, you know, these things are, are not public benefit, and, and we need to have real, actual public benefit from, you know, the, the green space. And so I ask you to please pass a clean bill, 37-19, as written, with no amendments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Renelle Brown, followed by Eric Rockwell.
Good afternoon, members of council. Just before moving here to the county, I've spent most of my life, 25 years, living in the city of Greenbelt, Maryland. And during that time, I was 14-years-old, and since then, I've watched Greenbelt not be as green as it was when I had first moved there. And this is a town that was founded by the Roosevelts, Franklin and Eleanor Roosevelt, and there are cooperative housing as well in that town. And so I know the importance of having green space, and I vote in favor of this and help that the council can pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker, Eric Rockwell, followed by Scott Papas.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Marks and Councilman Quirk for introducing this bill, it's greatly appreciated. As we all know, when the county goes out to acquire land for a park, that funding is either going to come from local tax dollars from Maryland Program Open Space, or through the dollars that are raised through the fee in lieu of the developer providing open space. This is the only fund that's not subject to the whims of the taxation system, and we shouldn't be restricting it, we should be encouraging it and supporting it in ways possible. In this instance, every residential developer who comes in to build housing in Baltimore County is required to either provide 1,000 square feet-- County is required to either provide a thousand square feet per dwelling unit or pay a fee in lieu of providing that space. The bill that was passed two years ago was an example of some of the problems we had in terms of last-minute amendments that were introduced, and that may be why there's some confusion now, and we're back revising again. But even given that fact, let me just draw one example. There are differences between Baltimore County zoning regulations and the way it addresses open space and the adequate public facilities law and the way it addresses open space. For example, within the adequate public facilities law, it recognizes that open space parcels dedicated by developers should be at least seventy-five feet wide. Whereas in the zoning regulations, the definition of amenity open space allows situations where parcels as narrow as seven feet wide, suitably planted, is considered amenity open space. That sort of incongruity would be cleaned up by this law, and I'm very grateful for it. Very simple situation. By passing this bill, you can increase the coffers for the county to be able to buy parkland, and that certainly is a good thing, and for that reason, I urge you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockel. Our next speaker, Scott Pappas, followed by Marsha McLaughlin.
Mr. Rockel. I'd like to speak with you after the meeting.
Okay. All right. Next speaker again, Scott Pappas, followed by Marsha McLaughlin.
For the record, my name's Scott Pappas, and I hope everyone's had a pleasant summer. I'm here to address an issue that was brought to this council's attention, I think it was late December of last year, regarding, okay, one of the two species of open space. We have open space that's recreation, and we have open space that is obviously greenway. Today, we're going to be addressing the recreational open space, okay, at the southeast Baltimore County corridor, specifically my neighborhood. And my neighborhood is Fort Howard, but in addition to that, I will be speaking for the neighborhoods of Lynch Point, Lodge Forest, Lodge Farm, Todd's Farm, Denton Avenue, Penwood Terrace, Miller's Island, Scholl's Discovery, Bauer Farm, Jones Creek, Cedar Crest, Wells Comus, Edgemere, Beechwood, Battle Park, Sparis Point, and of course, like I said, Fort Howard, and dare I say, for all the taxpayers of Baltimore County, Maryland. I'd also like to add to the record, okay, that I'm the president of the Fort Howard Community Association, I'm also the treasurer and board member of the seventh district civic council, I'm also the treasurer, okay, of the Baltimore County, what is it, the Baltimore County Alliance, Preservation Alliance. I'm also involved in the Citizen Advisory Committee for Dredge Management, and I'm done going on with that. Okay, now that I've made my point, is that I'm involved in a lot of things. The thing that I'm here for today is this, is that there is an area at Sparis Point that known as historically Penwood Park. Penwood Park was the understanding that when Mr. Osheski, excuse me, Dr. Osheski, put forth in his, I think it was, what was it, January, January website, he has a website, the Baltimore County website, he announced that there would be some open space regarding, okay, these recreational facilities. There was a study that was conducted, and basically that study was an overlay of a study of a work plan that was done in seventeen and eighteen by trade points, I guess contractors. Inside that study, the focus had changed from what we believe to be the traditional area of Penwood Park, and I'm not going to go into the history of this because we don't have the time for it. We just don't have the time for it. The thing about it is, is that that focus was shifted to an area that is now traditionally known as the old golf course. That old golf course is more than fifty or sixty percent slag. The original area we were talking about, Penwood Park, was over eighty or ninety percent original native clean soil. I'm also, again, wearing today not only my community hat, I'm also wearing my preservation hat. I've been in conference with the State Highway Administration, the Federal Highway Administration. I've been in conference with the SHPO, the liaisons, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, pertaining to the historic asset of Bridge Thirty-Ninety-Nine. What we were trying to do, okay, we're going to lose this bridge. This bridge is an eligible historic asset that can be listed on the National Register. That bridge is going to come down because we need to increase the height for the double-stack modular units that will be coming out on the trains. What do they call those? Containers. That doesn't have the height. So what we need to do is we need to elevate that bridge. I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
You want to listen? Fine. If not, like I said, this is a ridiculous situation here because I can't talk to you people. I call you all the time, you never return my calls. This is a sham, and I tell you what, I'm really tired of it. As far as this other stuff, not getting these amendments through, I suggest everybody understand that there's a constitutional tool called the referendum. And if you don't like the laws that these people are passing, just put a referendum in and put it to referendum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Scott, Marsha McLaughlin, followed by Barbara Hopkins.
Mr. Latimore.
And good afternoon, Mr. Latimore. It's good to see you.
Good afternoon, council chairman and council members. I am a resident of the Franklin Towne Community in Gwinnett. I'm a former, and in District One, I might add. I am a former board member of Neighbor Space of Baltimore County and currently serve on the board of the Friends of Gwinns Falls Leaking Park. Loopholes in the county law enable developers to count parking islands, hell strips, and private amenities toward payment of open space waiver fees payable to the county. The fact that these loopholes meant that only three-point-six percent of the required open space based on project square footage was actually allocated to open space shows that the loopholes in the current law need to be tightened. Climate change is real. It is an existential threat. One of the best ways to reduce its impact is to plant trees, lots of trees, or not to cut down mature trees in the first place. The preservation of parks, natural and wooded areas. The fact that a rooftop pool or a pickleball court could be counted as a deduction toward outdoor amenities is an insult to the spirit of the law and an assault on our natural environment, the real environment that provides food, oxygen, and open space for people and the other animals and plants we share the earth with. The reason we have open space laws is because wise legislators knew the relationship of people to the real environment, the natural environment, and public health. Listen, two years ago, the county celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of the Urteil, a first-in-the-nation planning tool. I live within the Urteil. I support infill development, and therefore I understand the need to maintain and even generate new quality open space within the Urteil. Throughout the county, it is critical that open space requirements are followed to the spirit and letter of the law, not simply as laws where loopholes can be found to weasel out of what is truly essential to so many aspects of public health. The parking island loophole and the private amenity loophole must be eliminated. I support Bill thirty-seven nineteen without amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latimore. I also appreciate your work on bicycle and pedestrian issues as well. Thank you for coming in. Our next speaker, Barbara Hopkins, followed by Angela, I think it's Heron. And good afternoon, Ms. Hopkins.
Good afternoon, Chairman Quirk and members of the council. My name is Barbara Hopkins. I'm the executive director of Neighbor Space. I live in Kathy Bevan's district, and I have a couple of things to say about this bill today. The testimony you've already heard, I think, is pretty compelling. There is really good reason for us to be here, two years after this bill was previously amended. And the reason is, A, the money that we've been able to see that's coming in is trickling in. It's not nearly, there's not nearly enough money here for the county, which gets eighty percent of the fees, to do what it needs to solve the huge open space problem that we have. The other reason is it's not being enforced. It's not being enforced on several levels, and I think the current administration wants to change that, but the previous administration had a field day in not enforcing this law. They put forth no-fee policy. We're going on three years with no fees. There's no fee schedule. We have no idea how the county is assessing fees for developers. But I want to really focus my testimony on some personal thoughts, taking off my Neighbor Space hat. I got a subpoena to testify in a development hearing last spring. Here's a transcript, an excerpt from the transcript. Protestant's counsel, "So what have you done in proceeding directly to the reduction of a fee? You skipped over the part of the code in two places that requires a showing that it is not feasible to meet the open space requirements." The developer's expert, quote, "I explained in my testimony that we are trying to amenitize a development, and the code allows us to amenitize developments now for open space versus lands or money that went into the general coffer." So that is the 2016 change in this law. That is the big thing. We are not writing a check to Baltimore County, and there is no money going to any other entity because of this allowance and this bill." Here, avarice trumps black-letter law. This insolence in these remarks is an appalling affront to the authority of this body. Worse, a county employee testified similarly. Members of the council, I respectfully ask, can we not turn a new page today? One where we clean up the law once and for all and make it work for real people, many of here, many of whom are here today. Show your support for those who are here today. Thank you. Thank you very much. "I believe the amendments are reasonable restrictions substantially related to the general welfare of the county under current U.S. law. I'd be interested to talk with anyone who sees it differently, but we need to do something about this. It's out of hand." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Our next speaker, Angela Heron, followed by Jane Wooliborzy. And good afternoon, Ms. Heron.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Angela Heron. I'm the Baltimore Harbor Water Keeper at Blue Water Baltimore. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here today. I am here to speak in support of this Bill thirty-seven nineteen. So my organization, Blue Water Baltimore, is focused on clean water and strong communities, both in Baltimore County and city. We do a great deal of work to try to improve water quality and reduce stormwater pollution. As you know, promoting, creating, and protecting green space is really critical to both reducing stormwater flow and also reducing the pollutants that are in that stormwater. As you also know, as we increase impermeable surfaces, such as parking lots, roofs, roads, we increase the amount and intensity of stormwater runoff, which in turn causes flooding and sewage overflows. As climate change increases, the intensity of these storms are increasing, and so it's even more imperative that we consider how best to codify requirements that promote this green space. So again, we're happy to provide any other additional comment, but we have a lot of thoughts also with regard to how Baltimore County and city work together. I know earlier you were just discussing the need for a regional water authority and just the idea that we, nature doesn't work by these political boundaries, and we have to think about things as a watershed. And so I'm really glad that this council is taking up this issue and considering how to improve green space here. I will also just add on a personal note, as a Baltimore County resident, I want to thank Councilmember Marks, who is my council member, for introducing this bill. Thank you.
Councilman Petoka.
Yes, Ms. Heron. I have volunteered with Blue Water Baltimore on numerous occasions, and I think your organization does outstanding work, and I just wanted to commend you publicly for what your organization does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Jane Wooliborzy, followed by Klaus Phillipsen.
Good afternoon, chairman and members of the council. I'm Jane Wooliborzen. I live in the first district. I've been a resident for twenty-three years. I'm an architect, and I'm a green building consultant. I've also worked as an employee of community conservation many years ago, and also spearheaded efforts in East Towson and Councilman Crandall in Dundalk. That was my little gem that I really loved working on. So fifteen, twenty years ago, the county was really looking at revitalization as a key in these inner-ring suburbs, and there was a reason for that. There had been not a lot of attention. What we did in my efforts in community conservation was we brought in an urban design assistance team, professionals who had a new eye to look at these inner-ring suburbs and shake it up a little bit, see how they could move forward, and the gems that they defined were exactly in Dundalk, the beautifully designed historic park, heritage park, anchors to a community where celebration happens, people cool themselves. That truly was the bones of the community that we started to work around. Without those green spaces, there was no collateral. So we're giving up some of this as we infill and we do disconnected, or fill, which is disconnected development, which has happened, as we know, for decades in this county. So not every, not every place has what we see in historic Dundalk. And I'm sure, you know, where we sit now with this park around us is also one of these. And once developed, these green spaces never come back. So in 2016, my husband and I, he's a Baltimore County teacher, we donated, and we are stewards to the Neighbor Space program. This historic Catonsville tennis court lot has a beautiful two-hundred-year-old white oak on it, and that tree will be around for four hundred more years. We now have a passive lawn bocce court for the community to come out and connect and be active. We knew if we had given up to all the solicitations weekly from infill developers to just build on this parcel, that green space would never come back. And so I want to kind of define what we know in our own communities of good open space, and that's where people collect and celebrate and get cool in these miserable summers, and we need to keep that and cherish it. I'd like to, again, support the passing of thirty-seven nineteen, and I would just encourage that we do not depend on our developers to design and preserve the quality of these places. I'd also like us to update and keep up with some of our surrounding counties on the open space manual and looking at sustainability. I want to thank my councilmen for putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Crandall.
If I may, well, first of all, thank you. You have to remind me your name. Hi, Jane. Okay, well, you know, you know my dad. So Dundalk appreciates the plugs. We like that. And the U-Dat process that you took part in, and my father took part in, one of the results of that process was the beginning of the Dundalk Renaissance Corporation, which my father was a founding member of, and I believe the first chair, if I'm not mistaken, Jane. Was the president of the board or chair, whatever the title was? Yeah. So thank you for your work on behalf of the seventh district, and again, for the kind words. It is really, it's a neat place. It really is. Two parks right there, and we are the only community that celebrates July Fourth for three days.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Klaus Phillipsen, followed by Robert Macht. And good afternoon, almost evening, Mr. Phillipsen. It's good to see you.
Good afternoon, Klaus Phillipsen, District One, president of my Neighborhood Association and also president of Neighbor Space. Good afternoon, council members, and those of you, three now, who sponsor the bill, thank you, and those of you who have questions, I wanted to first address three comments that I heard this afternoon. The administration cannot eliminate the loopholes. The administration will address the fees that have not been addressed, so there is a division of labor here. We have three years of data that show us that the county is not actually collecting the money that we need, and so that is the reason why we are reconsidering this. It is true that there was a compromise done in 2016, and we are feeling that we have enough information now to revisit this. And then also, it is not a Neighbor Space bill. It is a bill about open space. In the, I'm currently teaching a class at Morgan about the history of urban planning, and in the history of our nation's towns and settlements, planning parks and open spaces came before planning came before planning water and sewer or roads or any other thing. And in this explosive growth of our suburbs after World War II, we have forgotten the noble tradition of the public green space as a space to foster community. Now Baltimore County has a larger population than the city. We can need, not, no longer rely on the city's splendid parks, nor can we simply point to the North County's protected green spaces as the only solution. We agree with the home builders that counties compete with each other over attracting and keeping residents, and that is exactly for this reason that we need to focus on the quality of life. This requires excellent infrastructure. Open space is part of infrastructure. Open space needs to be preserved, created, and maintained. All of this costs money. Much of our infra, infrastructure, green infrastructure is in poor shape. 60 percent of county residents cannot walk to open space. Thirteen of 16 inner suburbs have a park score below the national average in our county. For Baltimore County to succeed in the future, developers must pay their fair share in infrastructure. And open space provides a win-win through added value. The tax base increases, and those who have developed property see their value increase as well. We also agree with the home builders that the obscure manner in which fees have been assessed and not been collected has, has to come to an end. Cutting developer deals and keeping a deficit in green space is short-sighted. Thank you. Support the bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phillipsen. Our next speaker is Robert Mockt, followed by Robert Smith.
Good afternoon. Um, I, I'm going to be talking, my name is Robert Mockt, and, um, I live in Council Potoka's, uh, District, um, right near Lake Roland. I'm a member of the Save Lake Roland group and the Lake Roland Nature Council. I volunteer with the council. Um, I'd like to ask if my friend Patrick could approach the bench, because I'm going to talk specifically about the CPC project, and there's some, um, particular data that it might be easier for you to see if he was, if he was closer. Um, so I want to show you how the loopholes reduced open space and fees provided in a project near my home that is under development review. It is known as the CPC Falls Road. The project includes 152 dwelling units, requiring 152,000 square feet of public open space. Loophole one allows for the deduction of 78,000 square feet of zoning open space, mostly parking islands. The balance of public open space required to be provided after loophole one is approximately 73,000 square feet. County law allows a developer to apply for a fee in lieu of providing open space if it is not feasible to, to provide it on or off-site. The open space plan lists the fee as $5.05 per square foot, which, when multiplied by the remaining public open space, comes to 371,811 dollars. Loophole number two allows for the deduction of 60 percent of the cost of private onsite amenities. This includes, in this instance, a rooftop pool, a pickleball court, signage, trashcans, among other things. Loophole two reduces the fee owed by $111,000. The equivalent open space divided by $5.05 per square foot would now be only 22,000 square feet. The point is that the two loopholes taken together reduce the open space or fee required to be paid by 86 percent. And that's a terrible result in a county where 65 percent of the people lack access to adequate open space within a quarter mile, quarter-mile walk. The health consequences alone of this open space deficit should be reason enough to change this law. For these reasons, I hope you will pass Bill 3719 without amendments. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mockt. And I understand, uh, Mr. Smith has signed up as well, but he's yielding his time. And, uh, okay, so our, our last speaker. Oh, okay. Mr. Smith, are you Mr. Smith? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that was Mr. Smith. All right, come on, come on up. Sorry, there we go.
Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, Mr. Robert Smith. I'm glad, uh, glad to have you here.
My name is Bob Smith, excuse me. I'm from the Rockland Ridge Development, uh, on Falls Road, which is just, located just north of the Blue Stem Development, which was the CPC project that Robert was referring to just a minute ago. Um, I'm an attorney, um, who represented our community pro bono in the just-completed administrative proceeding hearing on that development. My experience in those proceedings left me deeply saddened by the action of the lower-level staffers in the Department of Parks and Recreation, I think primarily under the prior administration, who cooperated with and illegally endorsed the developer's efforts to totally gut the county's open space requirements with respect to that project. In addition to the major effort to pervert the open space requirements with the specious, small, scattered, unusable, uh, spaces dedicated around the parking lots and on the forest buffer that were covered by Mr. Mockt's testimony, uh, and he referred to this map showing those, those areas. What I want to do is to highlight that the county reviewers also gave their approval to the developer's attempt to satisfy the requirements for an additional 1.7 acres of actual open space without providing even a single square foot of new space. The square footage on this drawing, which was the onsite, accounted for only about half of the 3.5 acres of required open space. The other, uh, was, as I say, the 1.7 acres, uh, of additional space that was required. Amazingly, the county staffers accepted the developer's claim that it could satisfy the open space requirements by providing a large fee to be paid for various unassociated projects, those projects unassociated with any open space at all at Lake Roland. This represented a complete perversion of the open space law and a mockery of the fee-in-lie requirements, which the developer never made a claim it satisfied and made no effort or presented any evidence that it qualified. It's one of the, it's, it's probably the, the best example one can give of how the whole existing process has been perverted and why no money or very little money is going into the Neighbor Space thing. By going this end run and, and saying, and the county accepting that open space had been provided when none had, none of the money went through the fee-in-lie process and therefore none of it went to Neighbor Space. I'm confident that this abortive and county-endorsed effort to do an end run around the open space provisions will be legally rejected in the hearings and the courts, but I'd respectfully ask two things of the council. First, I'd urge you to press the Department of Recreation and Parks to end its blind endorsement of such efforts to circumvent, uh, the program, and I'd urge you to be alert for efforts that may be made to offer amendments to the proposed bill that would subtly attempt to legitimize what was attempted by Blue Stem. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And I have provided a more lengthy and detailed written statement for you. Sorry for the incoherence here.
And, and sorry for missing you. I'm glad you, glad you spoke. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
And then, um, our last speaker on this issue today is Madeline Misco. Thank you. And, uh, good afternoon again. Thank you all for your patience, and I know it's a little longer than normal, uh, work session today, so thank you all for sticking with us. And, uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Madeline Misco. I reside in District Five. I also would like to thank Councilwoman Marks and Quirk. Um, I'm a writer and an educator, most recently at Doucher College. I'm, I'm here today because I am asking you to please support this bill, and I'm here today, um, speaking as an active aging person who actually grew up here in Towson. Both my parents worked for Baltimore County government, my mother for over 40 years. Uh, I'm a realist. I'm making my peace with what we've already lost of the outdoors we can walk to and enjoy in Baltimore County. On the other hand, I'm an optimist. I believe it's not too late to preserve, even enhance, what we still do have. I'm here today as an ordinary citizen who learned about this bill in the newspaper, and I appreciate the chance to express my reaction specifically with respect to the loopholes. Here's my reaction as an ordinary citizen. Do you mean to tell me that the whole time I've been walking around Towson mourning the loss of some lovely old trees, familiar pathways, feeling sad that historic East Towson, a treasure, is shrinking, that the whole time, one, there was actually a law in place intended to make up for what people like me have lost to increased development, and, two, there were actually loopholes in that law which significantly undermined the good it was intended to do? Learning about loopholes can be a major blow to the public trust, and learning that industry groups are concerned that this present bill would drive up the project cost is just more salt in the wound. Yes, it's going to drive up costs, because if you want to make a profit by building in Baltimore County, the law says you have to do that while still providing open spaces open to everyone, not just the people who can afford to buy what you have built. The mere fact that there happens to be a handy loophole doesn't make the original intent of the law any different. I'll close by quickly pointing out that just the other day, our county executive and the Department of Aging held an event to celebrate the Age Friendly Baltimore County Initiative. It was touted as a model to the rest of the country. I looked it up. There are eight elements that qualify a place as age-friendly, and the number one on the list is the existence of accessible, open spaces. How can Baltimore County be a model to the rest of the country if we allow developers to keep down their costs and fail to prioritize the need for truly open spaces for the rest of us? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I know, Councilwoman Marks?
Yeah, thank you for testifying. Thank you for your long history in Towson. Um, I did want to mention, you mentioned East Towson. That's an example of where we worked with Neighbor Space to create a new park, Adelaide Bentley Park, in addition to the greening of Patriot Plaza and Radabaugh Park. So there are some good things underway in Towson. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Um, any other, uh, questions or comments? Councilwoman Potoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was, testimony was compelling, uh, this afternoon, uh, to the, moving towards the evening. I initially, um, did not add my name to the cosponsor list because I had no history with when this legislation was developed in 2016. So I wanted to, to, uh, keep an open mind and hear the testimony, and I, I found it to be compelling, and, uh, so I'd, I proudly would like to add my name to the sponsor list.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, boy, now I want to. You, you don't.
Thank you. Any other, uh, thank you, I appreciate that. Councilwoman Potoka, um, any other questions, comments? Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd, I'd also like to, uh, add my name as cosponsor.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Chair, um, I have another request, uh, for, for the administration. Um, we've heard testimony today that, um, it's, it's unclear how the fees are calculated in the first place. So if we're not clear on that, then, um, I don't know how we can say that there are loopholes or there aren't loopholes. It certainly seems like they are, but if we don't know how they're calculated, um, uh, then, you know, and the gentleman showed us a picture where a parking lot is, is being counted as, as open space.
It was just on this island.
Okay, it was the islands, not the lot itself. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I, you know, if, if, um, PAI or planning or whoever's appropriate, Mrs. Rogers, um...
Councilwoman Crandall, it's already on my list.
Okay.
You saw me taking notes in terms of the, the, the calculation of the fees, just that whole part of our part of the laundry list that we need to do. We're going to do our research on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, um, questions or comments from the council before we wrap up? Everybody good? I do appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Evans and Councilwoman Potoka's and Councilman Katz all cosponsoring today as well, and, um, I did want to thank all the advocates, thank all the public speakers who have come out today, and I also wanted to recognize and appreciate the current administration who is working on this bill, uh, who has helped on this bill, but is also working on this issue, including, uh, hopefully updating the local open space manual and other much-needed work, including having a better system that's transparent and easily understood, which we sorely need. And, uh, I do want to remind the council briefly after this, County Council, we are going to meet in the library, uh, just very briefly. So thank you all so much for coming out, and, and thank you all for your advocacy and your work on behalf of the citizens of Baltimore County. You guys have a safe trip home. Thank you.